We didn't really tell anybody who it was. He's six feet, seven inches tall. He's the eighth wonder of the world.
Six eight, your solemn is short.
Six eight. Are you six eight? Easy on that chair, man.
In the morning, in the afternoon, I shrink.
I gotta turn the camera up. You're so tall. John King, everybody, is running for Fort Myers Beach Town Council. And John, we got a lot to talk about here.
Let's do it.
I always have to make sure I keep my microphone slightly lower for you because you, you come up to the town council to do your three minutes and it's a booming, uh, it's a booming, you're a former radio guy or something.
Former radio disc jockey, so that helps a lot.
Oh, wait, I just made that up. Is that true?
No, it's true.
Where did you work?
In Des Moines, Iowa, mostly.
No kidding?
Where I'm originally from. A lot of stations up and down the dial is WKRP in Cincinnati would say, but, uh, country formats, pop formats, rock formats.
No band?
Talk? No talk, really. Just, well, as a disc jacket, you talked.
Yeah.
Sat in a room by myself, played music and talked a lot.
What were, what were the years that you worked?
Uh, it was probably seventy-nine to eighty-nine.
The good old days of radio. Way different now.
Yeah, before all the takeovers.
Do you remember who the, one of the owners were that you worked for?
One of the owners of a station at Des Moines is also here with Fort Myers. It's, uh, I think they have, what, what is it? One oh six? I can't even remember what it is anymore.
Hmm, one oh six.
Sunny?
Sunny, I think it is. That, that's the same ownership group that owned in Des Moines for a while.
Hmm.
Do you know who? You should know.
I should know too, but it's been so long.
No, he should know.
We'll have to have some coffee someday and reminisce about the good old radio days, but that's not why you're here.
Not, not at all.
Why is John King running for town council?
I've been here just a little over a year and I've paid attention to what's going on in, in town. Uh, attended a few meetings, watched a few more on video. And I see, in my opinion, a sore lacking of leadership. Uh, I'm also hearing that there's a lack of communication with, with citizens. And, um, most definitely what I'm hearing is there's a lack of common sense. Oh, that's what I want to try and bring.
Wow, you, uh, you come right out of the gate, right there. No holding back at all. There's no sugar coating. When you say lack of leadership, be more specific. What do you mean?
Well, um, it just seems like they just kind of waffle. It's, let's figure out what we want to do. Let's go in there, discuss it, but let's come out with a plan. Let's not be looking at each other at a, at a meeting or looking over at the, uh, the attorney or the town manager or waiting on staff. Let's have a plan in mind when we go into these meetings. Uh, I came from a background after I left radio of going into telecommunications. Worked for a regional bell operating company for about fifteen years. And, uh, I was trained as a facilitator to help groups focus, get an agenda going, get a plan going, and get towards your goal. And it just seems like, especially the other day in the MRTF meeting, that was, um, it was kind of sad and painful to be a part of because they seemed to be all over the board with no sense of direction or what they were wanting to do. Come in, have some leadership. This is what we're going to accomplish today. Then you can discuss it, get a little help from your advisors, but go forward.
One of the, one, one of the things, let me ask one question about what he said, dear. One of the things that I think, um, helps give this town manager so much power is that they don't release the agenda until either late Wednesday, sometimes late Thursday, and then you get the agenda out and then the, even the town council members don't see it until, you know, they click on maybe Thursday or Friday and then they have to, you have to use their whole weekend looking at it because the meeting's on Monday. And I just think that's how it helps him consolidate his power. Are you a, a fan of this town manager or would you like to see some change?
You know, I don't really know him that well, but I would have, uh, certain expectations. And that is one of the ones that has frustrated me as somebody that started getting involved in issues before the town is, what is the agenda? Why does it take so long to get out? You're right. I've spent the weekends then putting together my comments when I want to address town council on Monday. And I'd like to be able to spend my weekends with my wife or do something a little more fun, but uh, get it out there early. You can always make changes, but just get the information out. That's what I've heard from so many people that have spoken to town council. Is that they had no idea something was coming down or nobody shared with them or that they shared information with the town council recently on the mooring fields issue. Uh, one of the homeowners got up there at the, that has a home on the canal and said, I came up with so many different other places that might function instead of where you want to put it down by us. And nobody even commented on that.
Well, when you said about improving the communication with the folks in the community, you know, the, the person that was on earlier, Patrick mentioned about having the meetings at night so that that would open it up to more people. What do you, what do you think about that? And, and what would be your ideas to improve the communication between?
If, if that's what it takes to help people get involved, that's, that's great. And I like that the meetings are televised and you guys do a good job of covering those as well. Uh, but, um, I'm willing to sit down on a monthly basis after each meeting and say, hey, uh, have like a town hall, not at town hall necessarily, but at whatever time works best for people and say, this is the issues that have to come up this month. What are your feelings on this? These are the issues that I see coming up next month. Let me know what you think. Whatever works for the people, I'll send out emails if I need to. If the people get up and talk in their three minutes, um, during the public comment section, they do have communication pieces there. Now, I know a couple of times, a couple of the council folks have contacted uh, speakers and said, tell me more about your issue. I would do that probably after every meeting. Did you get your issue addressed? Do we need to do something else? Just to make people feel like they're included and a part of it. And the town is working for them instead of vice versa.
One of the, uh, issues that you talk about when you go to the council is the window tinting issue, uh, and how it went from forty-five to fifteen. What is your, what do you want to say about that?
Well, I have issues with the whole, or a lot of the ordinance itself. Um, the issue of policing it is done by the environmental project manager. He's, he decides whether you're in adherence or not by just looking at it. And in this day and age with so much technology out there and equipment, that to me doesn't seem like it would stand up in a court of law. How do I know you have twenty twenty vision? How do I know that you don't have light sensitivity? And at night, if there's even one light on, you're going to be more interested than that. There's no definitive measurement of what is in compliance and what is not in compliance. I think that's wrong. Uh, the ordinance itself never addressed specifically what happens if you're having alleged violation. How do you appeal that if you don't think you've been violated? The ordinance doesn't address that. Now, at a meeting the other day, the environmental project manager did mention that you go, would go to the town magistrate. Okay, but at least let somebody know. That's another communication avenue. Um, so I think that's it. As far as the window tinting, um, I was really disappointed in what I heard from the MRTF the other day. Um, they want to keep me and my wife and others sitting in darkness in our units year round with this fifteen percent tint. Because for maybe six months of the year, you have turtles. Well, I'm at the extreme far south end of the island. I'm on facing mostly Big Carlos Pass. There may have been one turtle in the last ten years that put up a nest there. So why am I being penalized? Work with me. This is forty-five percent tint? Okay, that, that allows me to see out. Then I can put in blinds or drapes or whatever I need to do to help out during turtle season. But don't make me sit in darkness year round.
One of the things that I think, uh, George Repetti said, uh, at the Murph meeting was that Chad spends most of his time down there harassing the people and doesn't really pay any attention to the rest of the businesses. Do you think that's true?
I don't know. I, I like Chad. Chad's a nice guy. Uh, and Chad has been willing to work with us if he sees a violation. So that's good. But I, I, that's a lot of, to cover for one individual. And I don't know that they are treating everybody equally or not. I really have no idea.
Who have more, who has more rights on the beach? Human beings or turtles?
Well, for six months of the year, it's definitely turtles. And then there's a few months and there were birds involved as well.
Why do you say that?
Well, because down at our end of the beach, mostly at Carlos Point, uh, and Sandcastle, they've now, um, roped off certain areas.
Temporary refuge down there, right?
To help with the, uh, allowing the birds' nests. So the beach becomes quite unkempt and, uh, it, it becomes kind of an eyesore. The, the grass at times will get up to, believe it or not, up to my knees or hips. So, that's, uh, I can't believe they want to build a nest in there, but they probably do.
So, uh, are you familiar with the critical wildlife situation and the dune walkover? And what are your thoughts on that?
I've read about it.
Still my question.
Uh, it's, it's an interest, it's, it's, it's kind of sad that it's, it's had to go to this extent of going to a lawsuit and everything else. It sounds like it's going to be, uh, a moot point by the time the, the election rolls around because what, it's coming up for, uh, a trial in next, or June. So, um,
If you were on the town council now, would you vote for the dune walkover or would you, uh, ride the, uh, town attorney and, and ride it out and see how that played out in, in terms of fighting that? Or would you just say, let's end this and give them the dune walkover? Where, where do you stand on it?
It, it's been approved by the state. It's been approved by everybody else but, but the town. So that seems silly and a waste of money to me.
So you would vote, let them have it?
I would have, yes.
Okay. So, go ahead.
And I think it is probably still going to be going on even after this thing in June gets settled, right?
Right, because if they don't vote for a dune walkover, they can't just build one even though the state approves.
Right.
Right.
That they own the land, they still need to do a walkover and then comes to Burt Harris situation and that could be, could be. It could also not be, but it could be more money that the town would have to pay to them to, to make up the value of their home. But I don't want to get bogged down on, on Eddie Rude's issue, although I know he loves us to get bogged down on his issue all the time.
Here's something that I want to throw out there.
Go right ahead, man.
Uh, remember when Trump was president, how he never took a salary and donated it back to the federal government?
I totally tried to forget when Trump was president, but.
But I like that. He and Kennedy were the only two. Maybe Herbert Hoover also, I believe. But I'm willing, if I get lucky enough to get on the town council, to take a portion of that salary, five thousand dollars, maybe more, I'm not sure. I'd have to sit down with the town manager and the town attorney to make sure, but donate that back to nonprofits on the island.
Yeah.
Uh, nonprofits don't vote, so I don't think it's out there buying votes, but you have to be very careful about things like that.
It's still, you're talking peanuts though. I mean, the town council makes jack for a salary. It's not really.
Sixteen thousand dollars, so five thousand dollars.
Really that much?
Yeah.
I think you should donate it all back. Isn't that what Kevin Wayne does? I mean, seriously?
I do need some gas money now occasionally, but.
You need to get an Island Cards FNB. You don't need any gas. So, uh, sixteen thousand, wow, that's a lot of money.
Oh my, for the amount of time, it probably comes out to.
They're all retired.
I know, but the amount of time that I, I would imagine that situation requires, it's like pennies. Uh, uh, you know, you're getting ten cents an hour.
I think you should donate it to the community foundation, just saying. I mean.
One avenue? I think there's many.
How dare you?
Could it go to Bay Oaks?
Get us off track here. So.
I wanted to ask about, because I want to keep with some of the same questions. Community policing, where, where do you fall on that?
I'm always for the police and I don't think, eh, cameras are the answer.
Okay.
Um, I think that's an easy out, but I think having people, a people presence is, is a better thing.
So you would be in favor of maybe?
Was, has been the issue. I'd, I'd be, I could support that.
Uh, just reading some comments from our feeble audience or nine members that watch our show every week. Uh, and we appreciate you wasting your time coming down here to be on our show.
It's nice of you to have me. I appreciate it.
Another ten cents an hour.
You just being here is lifting our ratings, uh, even if there were ratings. There are no such thing as ratings. By the way, we're the number one show on the beach. I don't know if you knew that.
I figured that.
Uh, there is, uh, let's see, uh, there have been a lot of nests. Cheryl says there've been a lot of nests, not just, I don't know how many you said, but she says, argues that there's more nests than what you say. Um, let's see. The birds and the turtles own the beach. We're just guests. This guy sounds like he's more pro-development.
Well, I come from a small business background in Iowa. My grandfather, Italian immigrant grandfather, started a donut shop to get out of the coal mines. And yes, there are coal mines, were coal mines in Iowa. So he started that as a family business in the twenties. Uh, when he had a heart attack, my dad took it over. Um, my dad developed cancer, so I took it over and worked it with my mother. So I know how hard it is in small business. Um, and we kept that going for a few years after my dad passed and, uh, sold it. And then that's when I got into radio, but I'm always going to have a soft spot in my heart for, for small business or business in general.
Even though town council is only sixteen thousand, when you were in radio, I know for a fact it was less than that.
Well.
An on-air shift back then was less than sixteen thousand.
In nineteen seventy-nine, when I started, I was probably making less than minimum wage and I don't even remember what that was. But I got up to six hundred dollars a month in one job, moved to another one for eight hundred dollars. But by the time I left, I was making not bad money for not having to really work.
What's not bad money in radio?
It was probably well over thirty thousand.
Oh, wow.
In, uh.
How come you never made that much?
I made, the most I made in O'neana was thirty-five.
No, you didn't.
I did. I was, I started, I think at thirteen-five.
Yeah.
It was my first radio salary.
Where were you?
In O'neana, New York. And eventually it got to thirty, maybe it was thirty, maybe not thirty-five, but, uh, we digress. Uh, so have you been following the jet ski situation on the beach? It's really gotten out of hand, hasn't it?
Yeah, and what a class move by TPI to, uh, to announce what they did yesterday. I read it on, on your, uh, website. And, uh, that's just very classy. Um, Mr. Ferguson seems like a very classy individual and a great thing he's doing to, to bring new life to the beach here. But yeah, it's, uh, it's an embarrassment when you admit that you're not enforcing the rules, the ordinance. That's sad. And then you've got a license out there that sits vacant. Um, you just can't have those kinds of things.
One of the things that, well, the, the, uh, the ordinance is going to be discussed tomorrow. I don't know if somebody's going to try, I'm sorry, Monday. I don't know if somebody's going to try and pull it because there was a little bit of a shenanigans on the part of the town, uh, attorney. They, they publicized the public hearing for the ordinance. This is the second public hearing and then on Friday after, uh, he realized he didn't include Bill Veach's language from the ordinance, he put it in the ordinance. Like if people looked at the ordinance before Friday afternoon, they didn't see specific language about transferring the licenses, which is a big deal. Transferring the licenses is a really big deal, a big part of that ordinance. And then, oh, by the way, I forgot to put this in there, so I'm putting it in there. And to me, that almost makes it like you have to start over at that point. That's a brand new ordinance to me.
I would think so. I would think so.
So it'll be interesting to see what happens, uh, on Monday. And I mean, I hope all those businesses are able to succeed and, and make, uh, tons of money and everybody's safe and the whole thing. So I just hope it works out for everybody. But the, the one thing about that is that the argument about the safety issue.
Oh, here we go.
Because if you're, if you come up with a rule that says, somebody comes up with a rule that says it's going to be five hundred feet or seven hundred feet or one hundred feet or a thousand feet or a mile, then that's the rule.
Yes.
You don't create a rule and then grandfather people inside the rule. That just, that nullifies now all these operators that we have from, we, what we understand are safe. These operators are safe. Maybe the ninth guy or the tenth guy isn't the safe guy and he's the one that damages it for everybody. But that's not really the safety issue. If, is it five hundred feet or not?
Yes.
I mean, are, but they're not five hundred feet. So that's the only thing that's peculiar to me. It's like, that's not really what you're arguing. You're not really arguing the safety issue, although you're all safe and everybody's doing a great job out there. I think the ordinance is going to be totally rewritten.
Well, if, if you're not policing it, it needs to be either pull it or rewrite it. It's, um, it just doesn't make any sense to have ordinances on the books that nobody's going to enforce.
Well, there are some that they enforce, just as Terry Prasad and some of the other people. I mean, if you're on the town council and you hear somebody that is on staff openly say at a town council, we're not enforcing this ordinance and we've been told not to enforce the ordinance and the, some of the vendors out there say, nobody's ever come by and counted our units. And then you have other areas where they're just bombarding them with, uh, violations. How does that, I mean, how does that work? How does government work that way? I mean, would you be okay with that?
No.
How do you fix that? Well, what's your solution?
Well, you, you address the town staff.
Yeah.
Or is the ordinance actually needed? Or?
Does the fish rot from the head or not?
What?
Sometimes. It depends.
It doesn't rot from the ass first, does it? I mean.
I'm not a fish person.
Yeah, neither am I. I, although I fish with a bobber.
You pulled that one from your.
I'm just saying, I mean, I, I, unfortunately, I watched a lot. I, I.
You have watched a lot.
I watched a lot of these meetings and I feel like so, the town staff demeans people on these committees. Like they talk down to them like they're worthless. Do you get that same impression from the meetings that you attend?
Well, the, the one meeting at the Murph I attended, um, so it's not fair to draw conclusions, but it looked like there's some friction there. The staff liaison was very frustrated and asked for, uh, things in writing so he could get back to them. So, uh, that just doesn't seem like a good cohesion there.
Why do people keep asking what your relationship is to George Repetti?
George lives in the same complex I do. I like George. We're both big guys. We both have interests in what's going on.
Why would they ask that? I mean, what is it? Somebody seems like they're trying to pin something on you with George. You were both at the meeting this week and talking about the issue.
Do you have any businesses to, I mean, what?
No, it probably started with our condo association. I came in and bought a unit at Islands End in November of twenty twenty. George had been the president of that association for well over twenty years. Um, after attending a few meetings, I saw that that board at the condo was dysfunctional as well. So I ran for the board. Well, George liked me and supported me and then I became George's boy. Well, I'm no Witty's boy. I'm Ray, I'm Ray King's boy and he passed away in nineteen seventy-eight. I'm Rosemary King's boy. She passed away in twenty-eleven. So I'm my own man. I'm very comfortable with who I am.
It sounds better when you say nobody's bitch. I know, you can say that, but you don't have to if you don't want to. Man, you're running for office. I'm not.
I grew up in a time in the radio, you couldn't say those things on air.
What radio station do you listen to now? I mean, what do you?
You know, I don't listen to the radio.
Too many commercials?
Yes. Well, and I have trouble watching TV now because of that too. That's why I DVR a lot of stuff.
Netflix?
Um, you know, I really don't.
Yeah.
No.
It's a waste of, I feel like it's a waste of good brain. Like I'm reading about the Bay of Pigs right now.
No.
Um, what the hell are you then? What are you doing, John?
I read a lot.
What are you reading right now?
I'm reading something my wife gave me about, it's called Truth or Die.
Yeah.
Very interesting. I'm, haven't really been a fiction person, but she's gotten me into it since I moved down here. I was usually a biography person, whether it's politics, sports.
So you're not a fisherman, not a boater person?
I like to fish. I just, I don't seem to have the patience anymore to do it.
I hear you. I'm not, I would never read anything my wife gave to me because it's totally uninteresting. But if you have to do it because you feel like you have to make your wife happy.
Is this how you boost the ratings?
No.
Cause my wife is my best friend. So, yes.
Whoa.
I, you know, she's the one person I enjoy spending time with.
I'm her best friend too, but I understand.
How about vice versa?
Of course.
I'm pleading the fifth.
I'm reading, I know you, I, I know it's, you're just want to ask me this question, so I'll answer before you ask it. I'm reading about, uh, the Bay of Pigs and, uh, the Cuban Missile Crisis.
I tried to cut that off.
I'm totally fascinated with what a, uh, I hate to say it, but it just doesn't sound like even during a short time that Kennedy was a great president. I mean, and all the other stuff that happened to him and all that gets passed by of some of the stuff that went on and how he coerced newspapers not to write stories and things like that.
We're running long not to talk about that. He's here to talk about the.
When I do my biography show, I'll talk about my book reading.
What about the lights on Astero Boulevard?
You know, it's, it's a sad issue. Um, and it seems like there's no answer for FPL coming in either. Um, because, uh, they're, they don't have the lights right now that are approved by FWC. But to me, obviously it's still owned by the county. Why, what cause of the county does say you get one point four million, you do with it what you want? Is there some bad blood there that I missed out on? Because that's something I'd like to try to address as, as a fresh face maybe or a different perspective of, is the county upset about something going on in this island? This is their road. They should be addressing that with more than, here's, here's some chicken feed. Go, go fix it yourself.
Oh, that's a whole different show, right?
Yeah.
By the way, there is one light that is now, somebody will correct me if I'm wrong because, you know, there's lighting experts out there.
And you're wrong.
People. But from what I understand from Steve, there is one light that, uh, is amber that FWC has approved that is on the FPL tariff list. But it requires many more poles, which would run up the cost. And so they're waiting for June. This, they're testing this other light, this other amber light to see if it works out. And tomorrow, again, Monday, there will be a representative from FPL and from Town Lighting, which is the consultant at the town council meeting, talking, answering questions, I guess, to see what the next step is. I mean, it really is. It's a, it's an odd situation that the town's trying to install the lights on a county road with FPL involved. It's, there's so many different organizations involved in that. It's, I don't know what the solution is. Cause people are still, no matter what, like I said earlier, they're still going to cross the street wherever the hell they want. Won't matter their lights or not. We watched it last night. It was like, you're really, whether you're in the car.
It was scary. Yeah.
You, you have to be three sixty. I mean, because people are coming from everywhere and they're drunk.
And you really, well, I, you're painting a wide brush there, but I'm saying, there, there was one car that came, you know, down this, down Astero. And I was like, man, I mean, he probably was going thirty-five, but it's too fast. I mean, you really need to go slow when you get down in here because there are a lot of people. People are on vacation. They're not maybe paying attention. They're not crossing in the crosswalk. And so it, it, yeah, you really do need to be watching and you need to go slow. You always bring up about the lighted walkways and I.
That's my solution. Just put lights in their sidewalks. The amber lights in the sidewalk so they're shooting out.
Well, at the crosswalks, at the crosswalks.
Yeah.
So they can have a lighted path to get across.
Early March, I took my wife for a birthday present to, uh, Barbara B. Mann to see Little River Band. And we came back.
They still together?
Uh, some of them.
What is the number one Little River Band song?
Finish his song.
I don't know that there's a number one song. I mean, there's Cool Change, there's.
Cool Change. That's kind of a chickie song, slow song, right? Cool Change. Which is another, is there a fast beat song from Little River Band?
You know, I don't know that there's really a lot of.
I have four boxes of forty-fives.
And there go the numbers.
In my, in my closet, like from the seventies and eighties. I'll bet you if I went through them when I went home, there'd be at least one Little River Band forty-five.
They had some good hits in the seventies and eighties.
I don't know what the B-side would be, but the A-side was probably a hot single. Cause every Friday I would go down to the corner of a record store and buy a new forty-five with my allowance. A record store. Now, where would you find a record store these days, John?
Nowhere.
So you were coming back from Barbara B. Mann and?
And it was after ten o'clock at night and it was dark down here. So I was probably going twenty miles an hour on a Friday night, just to make sure.
Windows down, arm out the window, singing Cool Change. You and the wife in the, in the convertible.
If there's one thing I've learned in, that I'm missing, it's time I spend alone.
There you go.
It's part of the lyrics for Cool Change.
Oh, I see. You missed, you weren't singing it. So it went right over my head.
You don't want me singing, but my wife's a singer. She's a trained opera singer.
Oh, wow.
Wow, how come you didn't bring her down?
Well, you guys got the voices in your family.
Trying to find a place to park.
I see.
And it was really tough. So she went and checked out the library. She's a, you know, a reader. So she went and.
Do your, do your kid, do you have kids?
No.
Okay. Cause I was going to say they both have like.
Let him answer the question about, he was driving down and you interrupted him. Go ahead.
I interrupted him?
No, he, she got it. I got it in.
So what did you see?
Went slow, just to make sure because it was so dark.
What, Little River Band was, uh, seventies. Like what are some other bands that were really happening back then that you, that you dig? You remember?
You know, I love all kinds of music.
Yeah.
Whether it's big band, some rap.
No, you're not a rap guy.
Uh, some of it.
Snoop Dogg, right?
No, not a Snoop Dogg fan.
Well, who's a rap band that you could name?
I liked the Beastie Boys for a while.
Oh, come on. That's not rap. Is it rap? It's kind of rockish rap.
Yeah.
Yeah. That's old school rap right there. Like the Run DMC.
Right to party.
Yeah, right. So where, uh, where, why should people vote for John King in November?
If they're looking for somebody that, uh, will listen to them, make a difference, provide some leadership, that's why they should vote for me.
Yeah.
Communicate and bring some common sense.
Do you have a website?
Not yet.
Okay.
Um, I'm not going to be officially able to be a candidate until Wednesday. Wednesday morning, I'm going to go down and meet with Amy, the town clerk and file my papers and then we'll be taken off after that. She's a sweetheart.
I do love Amy and, you know, you were talking about the communication vote before and I do think the town has a great PIO. I, I just, I just don't think that she's, uh, able to unleash her skills because of the way the town is run. But that's just my opinion. I could be wrong. I mean, every time I ask for information, she's right there and you get it right away and.
I've met nothing but friendly people down there, but.
What, uh, what, what are you going to change? The first thing, what is the first thing you want to change when you, if you are elected?
I want to, uh, hold meetings with people that have issues with the town.
Yeah.
When you come down, I'm going to contact you. Or if it works out where I can hold a town hall, uh, say like at the public library at a more convenient time for people, where it's got plenty of free parking. Uh, they can come down and like I said, I'll address what we've addressed. You tell me what you need and let's, uh, let's go forward.
Where can people get information on you or get in contact with you or if they want to send you money for your, your, uh, campaign? How do they find you?
I can't take any money until after Wednesday.
Got it.
Uh, so, uh, currently my, uh.
Your wife's laughing?
No, my wife's at the library.
Sorry.
She's at the library. She's, I'll tell you after the show.
Your friends?
Yeah.
Oh. Oh, Leanne. Yeah. Oh, sorry. I thought, we guys chatting together or something?
Yeah.
She's very pretty, by the way. I mean, I.
Jeez.
I can be reached at Maui, M-A-U-I-J-R-King@gmail.com.
You want to be my wife? I mean, I'm about to lose one.
Yes, yes. Take him, please.
Say the address again. I'm going to.
Maui. There you go.
All right. Thank you for coming on, John. Will you come back when you're official and we'll?
I will come back anytime you want me to.
Give you a chance to dig into the issues even more and I apologize for my wife's behavior.
We're going to make you sit on a lower chair though. So we're all on equal.
Just like on TV.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you, John King, everybody. Vote for John if you want to vote for.